If anyone's going to speak at the meeting, there is a sign in sheet right up here. We're going to close that here momentarily. Mr. Leeser is not here today, he's at another meeting, so I'll be filling in for him today. So, if we could, let's bow our heads, remove our hats, and we'll open in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity today that we get to come and do the work of the township that we're elected to do. Father, today's a special day as we now swear in new officers for the fire department, Lord, and as they come to serve and protect as the residents need it, Lord, we ask that you be with this meeting for it's in your name. And, Lord, be with the residents that we have lost that used to come to this meeting, and, Lord, be with their family and comfort them, for it's in your name, amen.
Amen.
Yes. Today, today's, I'm going to slide this down. Good afternoon, everybody, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Franklin Township Board of Trustees regular meeting, today is April 4th, it is now 12:01. If we could, we'll remove our hats and we'll stand for the pledge allegiance. Dan, would you like to lead us?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, at this time, I'm going to move down, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Chief, if you would, sir, and floor is yours.
Thank you. We're going to swear in firefighter Bryson Partlow this afternoon. As you know, the fire department's kind of a family affair. We're lucky enough to hire Jeremy Partlow's son Bryson. So, I guess we'll just get on with it then with your permission.
Sure, yes, floor is yours.
Alright, so...
You want to come right up front?
Just raise your right hand, and it should be that, right? I, Bryson Partlow.
I, Bryson Partlow.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will, in all respects.
And I will, in all respects.
Obey and comply with.
Obey and comply with.
The rules, regulations, and resolutions.
The rules, regulations, and resolutions.
As set forth by the Franklin Township Board of Trustees.
As set forth by the Franklin Township Board of Trustees.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of my employment.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of my employment.
There it goes.
So excited for you. Just be safe.
I'll just get a couple pictures.
I'll be watching for you.
Yeah.
I see you all.
Turn around.
What a gift.
Anyone else, photo time?
Very good, John.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I apologize.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Anyone that would like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you may do so.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we've hit things a little bit out of order, so now I'm going to ask for a rule call. Here.
And, Mr. Leeser.
Correct. So, what I'm going to do is go to the, we've been doing the speaker cards first this year, so what I'll do is go to the speaker card first, and first up, we have Willard. We have the, I'm, I'm like, do I do double duty? Thank you, sir.
No, I have, we have to do that. Do your thing. At the last meeting, I was informed by one of the trustees that it is a privilege for citizens to be here, and he does not want to allow the citizens to be here. He does not have to allow the citizens to speak. We got into a little heated argument about it, and I went and looked it up, we've already spoken to John about it, it's called the Sunshine Law. You, as trustees, do have to allow the citizens to speak, it is a law. So, I wanted to inform the committee that I did my research, I back up what I say. John has been informed about it, I've discussed it with John, I've discussed it with you. It, it is a state law that you must be transparent to the community, to the citizens. You must allow the citizens to speak. That's the one first subject. Second subject, West Scioto Commission had a meeting last night, just to inform you, John couldn't make it, so I'm just going to give you a real quick rundown. The Twin Creeks property, John is very involved with this. They have switched from the commission now to the city because the commission wasn't, wasn't going to allow them the variances that they asked for. They, we spoke to the owners of the other property on the other side of the street, they do not have access to that road, it is their private drive. I've spoke here to our township, they're cutting woods to come and to connect to the township road, but they have not came before the commission, as far as I know, to ask for permission to access that road. Plus, Brookside is listed as non-heavy, so they couldn't bring the construction trucks through there to begin with. That road is hanging on by its last breath, as it is now, it would be destroyed, but then, he would know better than me, but probably within a week or two, it would be destroyed. So, they're trying to do some shady stuff, and I wanted to let the commission know what they're doing, what direction they're coming, but the commission has been fighting this, they have been fighting the people who want to build the buildings, and they are very, very shady, the John's dealt with it, John knows. So, I'm just letting you know that they're probably going to try to tie into our streets, but they have to have two accesses for fire DMS. Right now, they're landlocked, they don't have, they don't have a single access. But, just to bring you guys up to speed. Thank you.
So, if I may, on the first, first part, I apologize, I wasn't here at the last meeting, I had a severe cold, and I felt better, but I didn't want to affect anybody, so I did not make that meeting, so I apologize. That's the third meeting I missed in 11 years, and I usually like to keep a real good track record. So, you spoke on, I know that I've, I have heard what you've heard about the privilege, and me, as a trustee, I tend to disagree. We have to post a sign in order to have a meeting, 24 hours advance. When I ran for office, I asked people to vote for me, because I represent the people. This is, let alone what your research, which you're correct, what the Sunshine Law states, but for me, as a trustee, we do, irregardless of topic, or how abrasive it may be, we may not want to hear it, as long as it's not in a foul way, everybody gets their three minutes to speak. And, so I apologize, I wasn't here, I didn't hear, I heard what happened, but as, me as a trustee, I believe that it's a privilege to be able to sit up here and work for the people. So, I apologize on myself, because I'm part of the board, so I feel I owe you an apology. Second, Mr. Stevens, do you feel a cut through is warranted on our traffic, on our street to be able to do that? And, I think we can pass a motion or resolution to state that we're not going to grant that, so that we're ahead of it. There's nothing that states that we have to give them access, is that correct?
No, you don't, you don't have to give them access, and nothing has been brought to our attention, and from the last time we spoke, and what I've looked into, there's nothing in the plans that really anybody county-wise or anybody knows, so...
Sir, would you feel comfortable if we was to have a resolution now that says that we are not going to grant access on, what street is that the?
Plank Place.
Plank, what is it?
Plank Place.
Plank?
Plank.
Or would we, the reason that I'm...
I'm going to tell you what I'm going to go back to, I'm going to go back to when you put the retainer place in on Harrisburg Pike, and all three trustees weren't there.
Right, and that's why I'm asking.
And so, I feel like all three trustees need to be here. We're talking, is two more weeks going to really hurt, sir?
We don't even know.
You know what I'm trying to say, I'm just trying to, let's have all three here, and let's make a decision. If it meant the difference, then I would reconsider.
They don't have permits yet, so...
Okay, but I'm not opposed to it, I, myself, will probably try to go out there and do a little bit more research for myself, see it with my own eyes, and things like that.
I will give you my phone number.
Okay.
And you can come over and I'll show you.
We'll make that happen.
I'll show you.
Okay.
Okay, so I appreciate that, no, I wanted, that's why I asked, versus putting a motion out that, the only reason that I would ask is not that we need it right away, but it's one of those, if they start to bring it up at the next meeting, that there's already a resolution, that Franklin Township is not going to grant access. One, those streets in there are not that old, so it was great that we were able to put all new streets in there, and to have that heavy equipment on there is not going to do justice to our roads, so I do appreciate that.
And access to the main road now is almost halfway, you've been down through there.
Right.
It's hard, it takes you five, 10 minutes to pull it to pull out.
Right.
Right now, you have another 500 cars trying to pull out the same street.
Right, well, my biggest thought is, them cutting access to come through, and then they want to use that to, as a job site to build.
They already cut the woods, they literally cut a drive towards that street, and they stopped at the edge of the township property. The woods is already cut, so that's, that's why.
So, I guess what we can do is stay on top of that, and then if we see that they're connecting, I'm sure that we could easily say, even if we have not put anything in together, since there is no statute, you can probably, hey, you can't cut through here. Okay, and then we would even, at that point, we could barricade it if they tried to connect.
Well, prior to them even being able to do it, they would have to come to us, we're a lot away from it.
Sure.
And we can deny that right off the bat.
Right, and I've got a feeling, like, from what I've went toe-to-toe with them, in many of these meetings, they're the type of people that's just going to do it and then say, oh, we didn't know, and it's already there. Gotcha.
We're arguing a lot.
Okay, yeah.
I did want to say something about his first statement, about the speaking at a meeting.
Yes, sir.
Because I've walked into these meetings, it wasn't a regular board meeting, it was a special meeting, and John was the chairman, and the first thing he reads at the top of that agenda is that they'll be taking no questions. So, I guess I'm a little bit confused on why we're changing, you realize the last meeting that he wasn't able to speak at was a special meeting.
See, I was in here, and that's why I said I don't know what...
But, I was asking the trustee about, the whole thing that, the whole reason it came up was, I asked, why did, why did the trustees move the public speaking from the end to the beginning? Because during the meeting, you will be bringing up stuff that we've never heard about. So, at the end of the meeting is when the citizens will be asking you questions. So, I asked him, why did you move that? Because it didn't make a lot of sense to me, because we're going to have the most stuff to ask you at the end of the meeting. And then that started, it, it wasn't exactly about the last meeting where we went last week, it was, that, that, that's what started.
No, I'm just trying to say to you, do you realize that you've now, you said, you, I, I think you weren't aware of, that's what I'm trying to prove, or say here, that this was a special meeting.
Okay.
And you know when we've had special meetings before?
Right.
And you come in, one of the first things you read?
Yes.
Is that there's not going to be any audience participation, basically.
Okay.
The other statement that he just made is, and we talked about this at the last meeting, you have us write down on that paper what our topic is going to be that we'd like to speak about.
Sure.
And you maintained that I had to speak about what, what I wrote down.
Correct.
He wants to be able, and I couldn't believe me, because I wanted to do it for years, they, he wants to be able to speak about what he hears about during the meeting, and that's not an opportunity to do that.
Okay, so here's what we can do, there's a couple different things. One, usually, when I was chairman, and we had a special meeting that we're going to be in and we're going to be out, it's always open to the public, I would always read off that this is a special, special meeting, and that we're not going to be taking any questions, so there's no sign up. So, I wasn't here for that meeting, so I don't know what took place.
I understood, I understood that.
So, moving to the speaker card, this year, every chairman can kind of say, hey, let's take it from the beginning, let's take it from the end. It really did, at the point, didn't make a difference as long as we had this and people could sign up. Generally, people would come in that they want to speak on a certain topic like you today. So, generally, you would put in your name and et cetera, et cetera. And we find that majority of them, what they were speaking about wasn't necessarily what went on in the meeting. Now, I agree with you, and this is something that the board can consider real quickly, do we change it back to the end of the meeting, and then also, if there's something that they want to talk about that was spoken in the meeting, then they would be able to do that. So, at one time, people would put down, just, just in case, and then we would go down through the list, and then they would say, ah, it was nothing that I heard that I wanted to speak about. So, generally, what we have to do is come up with a way that is going to suffice everyone, because generally, any meeting that you go to, if you're going to speak, you're speaking on a certain topic, and not necessarily what you heard in the meeting. If you write down what you heard in the meeting, at the next meeting, if you want to bring up that topic and speak on it, that's usually how we do it. Is that suffice, or is that...
The only thing, I mean, this is fine, the only thing I was asking for was maybe to have a, at the end of the meeting, a spot to where you would answer questions.
There is a remedy.
Open to the public to answer questions.
There is a remedy, so you can do the three minutes at the beginning, like we're doing right here today, and then at the end of the meeting, you can say, two minutes, but only to discuss what was discussed during this meeting.
That's all.
That would give people two more minutes, to come to the podium, and just as we did here, we sit and we listen, we don't interrupt, we run the clock, and when they get done, we give them an answer, and it's over and it's done.
Okay.
So, you can come up, share your concerns with the board, three minutes at the beginning of the meeting, and at the end of the meeting, if someone wants to get up, come to the podium or wants to stand up, I used to like to just stand up, and have a say for two minutes, and say, I just heard you say this, and I'd like to ask you a question about it, and then we move on.
That's what I was, that's what I was, I was asking the trustees at the last meeting, and it was the arrogance, and it's a privilege for you to be here, and we don't answer to you, I mean, that's, that's exactly, he was sitting there, he heard the arrogance of words.
So, what I'd like to do is...
I was upset about that.
I understand, I'd like to do what we did on the other thing, can we get with Jim?
Yeah.
And have an answer, we'll bring it up in two weeks from today.
Yeah.
And try to have an answer.
Yeah. So, as, as chairman, we try to support the chair, but then the other two do have the ability to say, no, we want to see this. I want to do what is going to be in the best interest of the people, especially the people that come to the meetings and that have questions, they take those things back to their community and et cetera.
I was just upset that an elected official told me that it was a privilege for me to be here, and he didn't have to allow me to be here. That's not how things, that's not how things...
I, as I stated, I think it's a privilege to be able to sit up here and speak to everyone here. So, that's, you know, where the privilege for me comes in, but, you know, I don't want to speak for him.
I didn't want to bring up, I didn't want to start all this, but I was just...
No, no, this is what we're here for, right.
Because I sit on the West Scioto Commission, so I'm speaking, you know, I'm, I'm not speaking from, I know what I'm talking about, you know? So, I looked up the laws so that I would be correct, and I came to a trustee and said, hey, wait a minute, this isn't, this isn't right, and found out that I was on the right track, so I wanted that trustee corrected or procedures put into place to where we follow the correct laws.
So, what we can do, just so that we address this, sir, if we put this on the agenda for the next time, and have a blurb of what the Sunshine Law is to remind all of us for our next meeting, and that would be under, if we put that under Old Business, then at that point, we can say, do we want to add that under, and then that would be the first topic under Old Business at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
This is what you want to address?
The Sunshine Law in regards to people speaking, and, you know, if we see something in regards to, if, I don't like the word privileged, but pertaining to that, what we're hearing, because obviously, it's, there's got to be a better word than privileged, because I disagree with that for my personal self. Okay?
You got one more.
Yes. Brennan Fuller.
I retract.
Okay, thank you. So, we're moving on to New Business, Patty Spencer with Southwestern Area Commission.
I have a couple of things. Happy Thursday, everybody.
Happy Thursday.
Happy spring.
Yeah.
I just have a couple of things, I'm sure the fire chief will know about this, but on April 27, Columbus is having their Community Safety Day. Oh, maybe not, okay.
Is that a Saturday?
Yeah, from 10 a.m. to 2:00, at the Fire Training Academy on Parsons Avenue, so you know where it is.
Old Worley High School, for those that may not know.
And it's going to have, like, all sorts of Columbus, Cubic Life is going to be there, Nationwide Children's Hospital is going to be there, various Columbus agencies will be there. Also, our Reed Center for the Columbus, our commu, one of the community centers called Reed Center, is now a member of the Homeless Prevention Network. And if you know anyone that is on the brink of homelessness or needs assistance, they can contact that center. I have a contact name, and I can make an appointment with them for housing and stability and support, so, that's all I have, I will drop this off.
So, what I'd like to do is open the floor for a moment, if anyone has any questions here and none, I will close the floor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your support. For those grand applications, thank you.
Oh, you're more than welcome, more than welcome, anytime, and I do need to talk to you after the meeting.
Okay, so now we'll move on to the fire department chief Arnold. And sir, the firefighter that we had with, I'm going to call the Cleveland Rescue, is he still with us?
Oh, yes.
I remember that case, it's always been a year ago.
Yes, so, I was asked just to bring run numbers at the beginning of the month for the first meeting, so I just have some general responses for you. In the month of March, your fire department ran to 10 building fires, 22 total fires, 13 auto accidents with injuries. We had 13 cardiac arrests, which 54% of the time, which is seven of them, we got a return of spontaneous circulation, which basically means the heart kicked back on, whether it remained that way or they passed at the hospital, I can't get those numbers. But, 885 total runs, 418 of those were in the township. Other than that, I don't, I don't have anything, if anyone had a question.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I was just doing my head.
At this time, I'd open the floor for any questions to the fire chief. Hearing none, I'll close the floor, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our, wow, no one, no one corrected me, police department, I skipped over to you, sir.
After you. Before you, sir. Yep.
Lieutenant, thank you for... You could have said, what about me?
Right. So, I'll start off with our general stats for last March, we had 1,022 runs with our police department, 18 SSW units, 14 burglaries, a bad check, four DOAs, seven animal complaints, 26 auto accidents that were not injuries, 45 that were injuries, which they helped us out on. One hit skip with an injury, and 22 hit skips without injuries, 64 domestic disputes, three fights, 26 thefts, three missing persons, four persons with a gun, one with a knife, two robberies, seven shots fired, 14 stolen vehicles, three recovered, six suicide attempts, 143 suspicious person calls, 10 suspicious vehicle calls, 12 vandalism, six threats for inorganic harassment, 65 alarms, those are like when we respond to businesses or homes with an alarm goes off. Eight assaults and 124 traffic offenses and five overdoses. Then I have some results on, we have the, which we're still waiting on, two new ones, our speed cameras. And it has placed one, the one that I have for 14 days on Willow Avenue, it's a 25 mile per hour zone, running against a lot of traffic. Yeah, there was 8,653 car vehicles that ran down through there, 1,923 of them were running at 38 miles an hour or above, so we need to provide a bit of enforcement.
This is a lower level?
This is in between Upper Harrisburg Pike and Brownard. You know what, I don't have it, I got it on my phone, though. Because we moved it twice last month.
data.
You want a big run?
Yeah, I have it, can you say it real quick?
So, on Big Run East, it's 25 mile an hour zone, 7,026 vehicles went down the roadway, of that, 2,297 were going 33 miles an hour and above, so 67% was obeying the speed limit.
Now, was that Big Run where the curb is, that's what, east, and that's coming through there, correct?
Yeah.
So...
A lot of vehicles. Yeah, we're pretty busy. Yeah, we have, just off of the, we're background two guys that look fairly decent, that doesn't mean that we're going to end up with them passing their whole background, but hopefully we'll have two guys who are going to come to you over here in the next couple months to hire as officers, okay? That'll help us out with getting some of those taken care of. Also, the flock cameras, I see that's on there, on the agenda, do you need anything on that?
I don't think we do, and then do we, do we necessarily need, I think that Mr. Mazer would, excuse me, Leeser would be okay with it, but do we want to wait to move on that?
I do, I do have a few questions.
Okay, so we'll wait until we get to that.
It's not necessarily, well, one of them you can answer, have you decided where they'll go?
We, I personally, we already have, they're not our cameras, I can give you a couple of those stats of the cameras that are over in Higginwood and ones that Prairie Township has, okay? Higginwood has three cameras, basically on a stretch of road that goes down through their section. In January, these are just stolen or wanted people hits, I can't tell you where, what it led to or didn't lead to, because I don't have, I can't log into it, like, if they were ours, I'd be able to log in and see a little bit more information, but these are, these are actually Higginwood. They had 13 hits in January, 14 in February, and eight in, in March. Prairie Town... Prairie Township's cameras, and it's their cameras, not, it's actually Prairie Township purchased this, they have ten. And they've had forty-four hits in January, fifty-four in February, and seventy-one in March. Now, we get this information by phone, so like if a stolen car or a person wanted for a major felony or something like that comes down Broad Street our direction, you know, we can be prepared to help out with the county to catch these cars. I personally would put them somewhere down south here. I haven't, I wanna, but I wanna sit down by steady and get an idea with Byron and maybe talk to the guys where they think they might want them. But the south end of the township needs some kind of attention with that, so.
With those flock cameras, can I Google flock cameras Franklin Township? Does that information go out, like, to the bad people where we put them?
Nope, they can't, you gotta have an account, in fact, if we don't pass this, we're off the system.
I just didn't know if it was public knowledge, if they was to research, like, if a bad person was like, well, we know it's right here, and we just avoid that area.
It just goes...
Either way, it's a deterrent.
Yep, it just goes to the officers, only the officers get it, right now Franklin County has our share, you know, we're sharing our information together with each other. If, as of fifth, April first, which was a few days ago, we had a minimum purchase requirement with two cameras, and then we're taking off. I asked, I was under assumption we would approve them today, I asked for...
I'm not, I'm not against it, I just had questions.
Well, I didn't mean that, yeah.
So...
So they extended it for till, you know, tomorrow, if you say yeah, I can tell them, keep us on the system, and then we'll work on getting our cameras.
Okay. Little Avenue, Lower Little, on the other side of Brown Road, I call it Lower Little, because it goes down. Park Street, I think, is the last street that turns off onto the West Park. Can we make a note to check? I got a call that the property that is the county commissioners, people are starting to use that as a private place to park their cars in there. And they were concerned about, it's starting to happen more frequently, that people are turning that into their own private parking lot. Now, we also have, I haven't been down there in a while, but we had, like, an old boat, we had the gravel, is all that stuff still in there?
There's still quite a bit of debris, and we just continually turn it back over to the county and say, this is what's happening on your property, and it's kind of a disaster.
So, Mr. Mazer, are we able to add that to Nicole's list to see what we can do to facilitate a cleanup where people are either dumping? And I know one time there was a boat in there, there's construction material like gravel and, and, which didn't look bad, looked like someone just backed up and dumped a truckload of gravel, we could use that. And I think the other was sand or something. There's car parts, there's a boat, and then people are utilizing it just to park their vehicles in there. Park...
West Park, yes, though.
West Park.
It's right before you go into...
Can't lease.
Yeah.
But I guess, if you turn on the West Park, that, I don't know if it's the only house there that they're using that property as their, their parking area. I didn't know, I just got a call on it, and I said I would bring it up to today's meeting. Yeah, and if we can just, maybe even if we tell the people, hey, you know, can't park in there.
I think there's no parking signs down through there, I'm not sure. Maybe you guys actually put them down through there somewhere, they may be beyond it.
Yeah, because, just the other material that we've seen for years that we keep telling them, to me, that just invites more stuff to be dumped there. So, and that's county commissioners that own that land, that was part of the land that was purchased by the county commissioners, the homes, because of the flood plain.
Yeah, that is county land, isn't it?
Yes. So, you know, they're not supposed to, want it on there.
Trespassing, how this actually counted or not, I've never dealt with that. Yeah, if I, if I had something like that, we'd just go in and move them.
Okay, so if we, can you put that in your notes?
I'd have to talk to him and see who can contact him there.
Which you need, that sounds like that's the direction you're really...
Yeah, if we can, if we can obtain a trespassing ability, I don't know what you guys call it.
It's a contract.
Contract, trespassing contract, then we could facilitate that, then we could just remove all the stuff that say it correct.
Yeah, what I'd have to do is also sign up, there's two forms, we have one for four trespassers, then we have a private property for cars, like, that we call out, well, people out here, what I would do is I'd have them sign off on it and make it blank for the type of car, or whatever it is, and then when I found one on there, with their permission, it's okay to remove cars in there, and then if what, then I could go take the cars off.
Okay, I don't think that they would be opposed to that, because we've been asked, waiting for them to do something, and if we're an agency that is willing to do something, then it would behoove of them to want to allow us to keep our area clean.
I'd want to put a seventy-two or thirty sticker on it, just to give them...
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Yeah, and we'll play roles, but it'd be nice that we could finally, because that boat's been there four years or so. I don't know if they just store it on there, or if it's...
There's gravel, there's block, there's all kinds of stuff stacked up right there.
Right.
People have to leave it.
Right, and that, that's not good, so do you have anything else, Fars?
I got one more thing to do. It's not on the agenda, and I'd ask, either you can give it to me orally now, or we can talk afterwards on the mail chimp.
I got it all right here.
You have it?
Yep, sure do. I heard that there was concerns, some concern, well, one, I'm not sure about it, but like, the car, I don't think it's blind anyways. I think that maybe it might be because of the road to the area, but I just let it sit till I wanted to figure out if you guys were even wanting to keep it going or not. There was a concern, you said that maybe, that you didn't get some emails, and maybe...
Correct.
Yeah, so, did I go over?
Yeah.
This is, I did, I actually, even though it's not active right now, the account is it, I added, is that yours?
Yeah.
Okay, I added your new email address right here on...
March twenty?
Yeah, and then, because I had done a search, I wanted you to know that you're still in the system. So it's showing your old address as Blevins for trustee at gmail dot com.
Correct.
And that you had subscribed on February the twenty-sixth or something like that, of twenty twenty-two, so it's still in there. I don't know why you're not, why you wouldn't have been getting it, because we've done twenty-four mailings.
Okay.
In the last two years. So, they haven't always been a newsletter, some of them, like, national night outs come in, and that kind of stuff, okay? So if you're not getting it, it has to be going into your, like, spam, have you checked your spam folders? I get mine in my junk folders.
Okay.
So I don't know why they go there, but they go there.
Sometimes what you can do is go into your search and type in mail chimp, and it'll pop up, and you can say allow.
I just wanted to see if it's in there.
My question is, the payment that we're making every month, we have fulfilled our end of the obligation, and it got published every month.
Not every month.
Not every month.
If I, I'm the only ones, two minutes, so if I, like, when I get the month, I get a surgery, maybe, or something like that.
Point that he's not, I talked to Steve about that, I, when I researched it in my head and thought about it, I said there was, I'm not gonna use the words we're not supposed to use, there was a time when Dave was out.
Yeah.
So maybe some of those missed ones could have been when Dave was out.
Well, there's, he should be, there's pictures of, only, there's only one that didn't go out, and that was in June, I think, that was when I got my surgery.
But we're back on...
You should be getting them.
Okay.
I mean, they gotta be somewhere in there, and a price hike is not due to us, we haven't changed any features.
And I thought it was approved to go, did it go from thirty-five to forty-five?
I haven't, I've gotten nothing of that. Only thing I got is...
Approved, you're correct.
The only thing I got is...
I just want to make sure that the taxpayers get what they're paying for. And then I understand, when you're out, you're out.
Yeah, well, we've...
And then when I worked, when I wasn't getting them personally, I thought something was up, you understand, so...
Yeah, I get, what we kind of solved that too. Right now, he now is going to be helping me out with it, with the newsletter, so if I'm out, I've got somebody that can get in there and do the newsletter, we just send it to him and Byron and me for approval, and we'll work from there. So that way, we make sure it gets out, but I just want to make sure that you guys want it.
Well, I appreciate you getting back to me on it, because I've been asking for a long time.
I just heard about it.
Okay, well, I thought you could, that I've been asking.
But I don't come to the meetings, you have to...
And so, I understand, and that's why I came to Steve and said, could somebody give me a report on Thursday?
He asked me about it.
And so I appreciate you getting back to me, so.
I wanted to be prepared.
And thanks for all the help yesterday.
If you want, I know Jim even said something about it at one of the meetings, and what I was told, if you want to get this to him.
I sure can.
I pulled his up too, and I added his township, you know, it shows that his township...
Okay, sure, yeah, thanks.
Anything else?
I don't, I'm gonna open the floor, does anyone have any questions for the, I almost said chief, I'm gonna say, for the lieutenant. Hearing none, I will close the floor, thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
But I do, I do have a resolution.
Okay.
I just have a question, you gonna do it right now?
Well, I, I know Dave said that there's a, there's a...
This is only a money question, so if Dave doesn't want, Dave doesn't really need to be there for the next question I have, it's about... Well, I can just ask him, I'm pretty sure I got it in my head.
Sure.
There's a fee for each year.
This, this is a good question for David, this is right, I should ask this and got distracted. Dave, the whole, the whole resolution's written for thirteen thousand three hundred dollars.
For what, I'm sorry.
For the flock cameras, I'm sorry. So the cameras are seven thousand dollars, and then what's the additional?
What, the way it works out is, it's three thousand dollars a piece for the camera, and then there's an initial install fee.
Right.
So, only six thousand is the actual camera.
Okay.
But you, we have to pay that yearly for those cameras.
The six thousand.
They will keep them running, if they get damaged, and replace them. You know, it's, I like it, because I'm a police officer, and I like catching people and bringing people to justice, okay? But the money is a little bit, it's, it's a little bit, you know, six thousand dollars is a little bit high, but we also get the fact that we're attached with these other departments and their cameras, and it really helps us out with hit skips. Like, if we had a hit skip, we could just put a color of a car in, insert it, and it will give it back to us. It's, it's a pretty good setup.
I'm not opposed to it, I want to know is, my question is, six thousand dollars per year, correct? So, where, I understand, and we're gonna pay this ma, this thirteen, thirteen?
One time.
Yeah, next year, where's the six thousand gonna come out of the bu, police budget?
Yeah, it has to come out of the budget.
Okay, and you think your guys' budget should be able to take that hit?
Talking to Byron, he said we're good with it.
Okay, that was my, that was my question, do they realize that it's not, we're not paying for two years?
Right.
On this, today, they're going to have a hit next year to their budget of six thousand dollars, and that was the only thing. And you, you did address the other, because this quote has elapsed, but you said you spoke to them, and they're willing to extend this quote through today.
Yeah, I can, I'm good.
So, sir, if you agree to resolution, then we'll move forward.
Sure. It's Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero four six, approving the use of ARPA funds for the purchase of two flock cameras for the township police department. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township. Franklin County, Ohio, if the board approves the use of ARPA funds for the purchase of two flock safety Falcon cameras, including implementation fee from Flock Group Incorporated, that it costs not to exceed thirteen thousand three hundred dollars, and there's a, an attached exhibit. Is there a motion, first of all, in adoption of the resolution?
Okay, so if there's no further questions on the motion, I would ask for a second.
No, a second.
And we'll call, sir, when you're ready.
Mr. Le, Mr. Leisure's excuse, Mr. Flashman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Correct.
Can I ask for one second to ask, does anybody have any questions about what the flock cameras? You got, they're plate readers, basically, and, you know, when we enter, the people that are wanted or stolen cars and different things like that, it, it will contact each individual officer on the department when, when they're, when it happens. Okay, just wanted to make sure everybody understood.
And then can I have a second? Following trustees, Mark, for the second motion, the motion to approve the resolution.
Did you? Yeah, you did.
You made the motion and not, and not seconded it.
Yes.
And we'll call for the adoption of the resolution. Mr. Leisure's excuse, Mr. Flashman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes. Jim, Stevens, we're gonna be out with you next, if you want to take the podium.
Hello, everybody. Hello. We really didn't have anything for the agenda today, but a couple of weeks ago, we were asked to, just like Chief Arnold was saying, that we need to start bringing up some stats, so we kind of compiled some, some of our stats from February, and we'll read these real quick. I'm sure there's some stuff that we've missed. But just in February, we removed and installed new, one hundred and eighty foot storm pile on Rick and Road, installed and removed the old storm pile on Greenleaf, for the total of seventy feet on that. Installed and graded nine yards of topsoil on Rick and Road, where we had replaced the storm piles, installed and graded six yards of topsoil on Greenleaf and El Paso, which El Paso is a project that we reviewed earlier, and we're just trying to catch up with the settlement. Installed one of our new carp systems on the F three fifty dump truck, which picked up thirty-five illegally dumped tires on the alleys. Picked up twenty-five truckloads of brush, removed two down trees, one on Little Avenue, one on Big Run after storms. Picked up three truckloads of trash from the alleys, this is all townshipwide. Dumped and graded three truckloads of dryness in the alley on Rosemont. We got all of our mowers pre-tem raining season, and we performed multiple, multiple signs. Just kind of an idea, and now that we've got a way to devise a way that we're packing everything day, and so, I'm a bit more, you know, just starting to give the first meeting.
So how have we done El Paso, right, I haven't really heard, I figured my phone would burn off the hook. With a lot of flooding, I didn't have as much as what I thought I was gonna have.
When we get the amount of rain in such a short period of time, that we get even good plowing storm systems back up, we didn't get any, I personally didn't get any of those off El Paso the last couple of storms.
Okay.
So, everything seems to, everything seems to be going okay, our biggest problem, which is it's an ongoing battle, all of our storm goes into the city of Columbus. A lot of times in the city, Columbus stuff backs up, we unfortunately have nowhere to go, but we've got...
So with the one that I sent you, I talked to Donardo, Mr. Donardo, in regards to the back of his property, which would be Travee Road, which is at the corner of...
Angerlin.
Angera, thank you.
Yeah.
Or can we report that to the Columbus area? Because that, it looked like under one of someone's driveways, why it was stacked it up?
And I think, I think I copied you on email too, when I sent back, the majority of that is all over the ditch, and where it goes underneath of the road right there, Angera, and then you got this little short period that has a whole bunch of cattails that are growing up.
Yes.
I think that blocked a lot of it, because that storm pile goes from there down, chokes down.
Right.
So, yeah, I reported it to the city and the county.
Okay.
So, we'll wait on that.
Okay, because I know Mr. Donardo went out, and, which was nice, that he removed some debris so it could flow. And he said, no time, it started going down, but the cattails, and then under someone's drive would be, and I know that that's city, so I just wanted to bring you a breast of what our residents were concerned about, because they got up so high and started flowing back into the township.
If you look at the storm that goes underneath of Angero, and then you look at the open area where the cattails are at, and you look at the next storm.
Right.
That chokes way down to there.
Right, and we did, I don't know how many inches that morning, it came down pretty dang hard.
We've got a lot of it around here, they...
So with that said, sir, do you have anything else?
Is this Saturday tire take back?
April forty seventh, that's when you, that day is, and that April forty seventh?
Yeah.
And we are advertising that, so.
At this time, I'll open the floor, if there's any questions for the Road Department Supervisor, Mr. Stevens. Go ahead, sir.
Could you repeat that, was it take tire back?
We try to coordinate every year when the police department does a drug take back, like when people can bring drugs in and drop them off. We try to coordinate on the same day to do a, like, a tire drive per se, so if anybody has tires laying around, it helps kind of keep them out of our alleys, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Tire and rims.
Bring tires on rims. Bring tires on rims, yeah, we have, we'll have people here on that Saturday.
I just know of some, that's why when you said, I was like, hey, wait a minute, let me, let me hear that again.
From ten to two, feel free to bring them in.
Ah, yeah.
Yeah, ten to two.
Okay.
I got ten for the first time.
Any, anyone else have any questions? Hearing none, we'll close the floor. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Uh, sir, uh, I'm turning this over to Mr. Vazir, our administrator, and it looks like you've got several things for us today.
I do, I thank you, Mr. Flashman, um, for the fiscal department, Lindsay and Robin are in UAN training, so I'm gonna try to do the best I can and get some things done for them here. Uh, the first one, excuse me, is a motion to approve count, accounts payable presented on April fourth, twenty twenty four. It being resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board, excuse me, again, makes a motion to approve accounts payable from March twenty second, twenty twenty four through April fourth, twenty twenty four, in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand, forty six dollars and nineteen cents, from check numbers seven zero one six eight to seven zero one eight nine, and electronic vouchers five two one dash two zero two four through five nine five two zero two four.
If there's no further questions on said motion, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
And then we'll call when you're ready, sir.
You have, the, Mr. Leeser again is excuse, Mr. Flashman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
The next one I have is a motion to approve payroll reports as written, uh, being resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board approves, the Board makes a motion to approve payroll for the period beginning March tenth, twenty twenty four through March twenty third, twenty twenty four, paid on March ninth, twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, in the amount of one hundred ninety three thousand, six hundred and twenty five dollars and twenty three cents. The payroll for the elected officials for wages earned in the month of March, twenty twenty four, paid on April first, twenty twenty four, in the amount of nine thousand, one hundred and sixty three dollars and twenty four cents. Can I have a motion?
If there's no further questions, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Hearing a second, if I can have a roll call when you're ready.
Mr. Flashman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Uh, I do have a comment, or a couple points that, that Lindsay asked me to make with the Board. Um, the first is that apparently, working with Mr. Wilcheck, uh, the fiscal department is not getting the help and the, the assistance that they need. I apologize, I'm not, I'm not sure what that, what that entails. And then the second thing is there's some concerns about creating modules or tasks that Mr. Wilcheck does, that he is not sharing with the fiscal department. So I guess that's something probably we're gonna have to get with, with Lindsay specifically, and Jeff, and see exactly what what we need to.
In a few meetings back, we were all kinda given a report that, um, was given by, um, Jeff, as far as the last time someone, that Lindsay signed into UAN, was December third, and the Board has not addressed anything, because, one, I was just shocked to hear the difference in that, uh, Lindsay, I don't know this, so allegedly it would be the word, has not put any time in, maybe an hour here, an hour there, et cetera. I, I think that the Board needs to come together with, um, all parties and say, hey, what, what are we doing here? Because we're paying somebody to train her, but if she's not here to be trained, allegedly, cause I don't know, I mean, she's not here to speak for herself. Um, but there just seems to be cat and mouse or something, and, you know, the taxpayers are paying for Jeff's services. Jeff seems to be, cause we have an engagement letter coming up, Jeff seems to be here doing his work, so he's accountable for his work. So I don't understand why we can't get things to plug in correctly, but, um, you know, we would just need to, there have been a lot of questions in regards to that area, and I don't have the answers. And I don't think the Board should just say, well, we don't know and move on, because obviously the Board's being looked at, what are you doing? So.
So I guess the thing we do announce that we just need to sit down with all the parties involved and see how we can rectify this.
Absolutely.
Can you move it?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, with that, I figure we might, might as well just go raise Jeff's, um, engagement letter. And that is Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero five zero. It's accepting engagement letter number twenty seven between Jeff Wilcheck, CPA retired, in Franklin Township. Uh, being resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board approves to accept engagement letter number twenty seven between Franklin Township and Jeff Wilcheck CPA for, uh, there's a, I think I'm typo, for one hundred hours at fifty five dollars, for a total of fifty five hundred dollars, and there's an exhibit attached.
So my question, are we only doing this, do you know if we're only doing this in reference to one hundred? Or how, do you know how we're doing this, or is this just what he asked for? Or after a hundred hours, is he not here? Should we have, say, two hundred hours?
I've, uh, had a conversation with Lindsay this morning, and she would rather this be tabled. And I understand that he's, uh, has, uh, close on hours and whatever, and it resulted in they have to get together. But I think it goes along with what John was saying, we need to come and get like-minded on what's going on in the fiscal department, Jeff Wilcheck, before we spend any more money.
I agree.
It's just that simple.
Okay.
If it means we have to come together again, we have to come together again.
Absolutely.
Within two weeks, we have to, it's part of our job, but we can't keep paying out money, fifty five dollars an hour, and these two people not be able to get together, and everything that I've looked at says she can pick and choose the hours she wants to work. If I'm wrong, say I'm wrong, but.
No, she's, she's able to, but, you know, I, I don't know what her hours are or, or not, that's her department. I don't know how many hours she's putting in. I, I'm not making a comment either way on that, as far as is she doing the right thing, the wrong thing, I don't know.
And I'm not either, because it puts me in a very bad spot.
Right.
But what I will say is that we have all been together, and it's never been brought up. The opportunity to bring this up has been there, and it's never been brought up.
Right.
There was two meetings ago that we talked about it, and, in astonishment, and all of this and everything, and then after that, it's just fell deaf.
I agree with you, that's why I mentioned it now that we need this.
Okay, so, so now this is the second meeting that we've mentioned it, let's do something about it.
So.
Let's not just sit here and continuously pass things on and kick the can further down the road. It's time to do something, so let's do something about it.
So let's set up a special meeting, because it can't be an executive meeting. So if we can set up, Steve, uh, a special meeting that fits everybody, um, preferably between nine and noon, if that works for.
I'll make myself available every day next week, because this is, that's how important this is, that we get to the bottom of this.
I know Tuesday is not good for me, I, I can't do Tuesday, so, you know, any other day, you know, I pretty much can make work. Let's see what's good for Mr. Leeser. Okay. So, would you like to table this?
I would.
Okay, so hearing that, we would table, um, the engagement letter until said meeting. I, uh, asked for a motion to table.
Yeah.
Said, uh, Resolution number, let me get to it, Resolution number twen, uh, twenty twenty four dash zero five zero. If there's no further questions on it, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Roll call, Mr. Flashman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Okay. The next resolution I have is Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero four three. Its obligations approved by the Township Administrator for the period of March twentieth, twenty fourth through April second, twenty twenty four. And whereas the Board of Trustees in Resolution twenty twenty one dash one thirty authorized the Township Administrator to approve and currate obligations of ten thousand dollars or less on behalf of the Township in accordance with section five oh seven point one one of the Ohio Revised Code. And again, um, for the period between March twentieth, twenty twenty four and April second, the total was twenty two thousand, four hundred and twenty three dollars and seventy one cents.
If there's no further questions on the resolution, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Roll call when you're ready.
Yes, sir, Mr. Flashman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Next I have Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero four four, approving eighty hours of injury leave for Officer Troy Hale. Being resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board approves eighty hours of injury leave for employee Troy Hale for the period of three twenty four, twenty twenty four through four six, twenty twenty four, per Article twenty four of the Employees' Collective Bargaining Agreement.
And all statutory requirements have been met?
Yes, sir, in fact, um, we have attached a copy of his medical report for your review.
Okay. Do we know any statuses that he may be back?
You know.
I talked to him today about it, and he said that he's got his doctor's appointment like in the next day or two, and that it took in like April the eighteenth or nineteenth, a couple weeks.
April, April eighteenth.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And he says he thinks he's making that, that his, his doctor's gonna probably sign it. The doctor's on, for, for sure.
That's good, okay, good. So hearing that, uh.
I asked you about it yesterday, so I got my answers.
So hearing that, I'm going to ask if there's any further questions. Hearing none, I'm going to now ask for a second, I mean, ask for a roll call?
Well, we need a second.
I second it.
Okay, roll call, uh, Mr. Flashman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Okay. Next resolution is Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero four five, approving eighty hours of injury leave for firefighter Eric Pierce. Being resolved that the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board approves five hundred twenty eight hours, twenty two days of injury leave for employee Eric Pierce for the period of three twenty four, twenty twenty four through four six, twenty twenty four, per Article thirty four of the Employees' Collective Bargaining Agreement. And remember, he's, he's a twenty four shift, that's why the number looks large. Can I have a second, please?
Has all statutory, has all statutory requirements been met?
Yes, sir.
Hearing that, I'd ask for a second, if there's no further questions.
I'll second it.
Hearing a second, I'd ask for a roll call when you're ready.
Mr. Flashman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
His projected date, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, is April fourteenth?
When he's the gentleman, it was hurt, jumped out the window.
Yeah.
Okay.
You just saw him, even if you didn't realize it, he was just in here.
Okay.
So he's back on his feet, so hopefully.
Yeah.
I don't know if that number totals right, though.
These are fluid dates anyway.
No, the, cause we approved that all of his injury time, I think the last meeting, and it was a big number, this number should just be two weeks worth.
Is this eighty hours?
Not eighty, but no more than one twenty. It's either one twenty or ninety six, depending on what schedule he was on.
Okay.
I think he did five twenty eight last time, and that got him concurred up to the March twenty fourth, or March twentieth, and then this pay should have just been a hundred and twenty or ninety six, depending on what rotation they're on, schedule wise.
Can we sit down?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And the next resolution I have is Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero four seven. It's a resolution to provide supplemental appropriations number four for the period commencing January one, twenty twenty four, and ending December thirty first, twenty twenty four, whereas it is necessary to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, during the year ending December thirty one, twenty twenty four, and whereas the annual appropriations Resolution twenty twenty three dash two seven zero is due from January one, twenty twenty four through December thirty one, twenty twenty four, uh, needs amended. And section one presented and exhibit A here to attach B and the same are hereby set aside and appropriated for several purposes for which expenditures will be made for and during the year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And what we have are appropriations, uh, thirteen thousand, three hundred, thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars for the flock camera system, and sixty four thousand, five hundred dollars for the fire department, which would include radios and turnout gear and ceiling for, uh, fire department parking lot.
If there's no further questions on the matter, I'd ask for a second.
I, is part of this the, the six thousand dollar grant?
Yes.
Yes, Mike, there is. I'm sorry to say, you have radios, uh, would be fifteen hundred of this, and the marathon grant would be a hundred and six thousand dollars for this.
Wasn't there some laser or, uh, heat imaging, or am I thinking of something?
No, that's what the six thousand dollar grant was for, was for a thermal imager.
Okay.
We got the check, now you just have to.
No, no, I just pointed it. I didn't hear it. Did you say that?
The laser? No, I just mentioned, I didn't even bring the grant up until you.
No, no, it's fine, I'm just trying to, so the grants for six thousand, right? This amount is seven thousand, five hundred.
Fifteen hundred of that.
There would be fifteen hundred for radios.
Okay.
And then another six thousand dollars for the, the grant, which is what the thermal imaging?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, that's good enough, I just wanted to make sure we're all talking about the same thing.
Sure. So if there's no further questions, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Hearing a second, roll call when you're ready, sir.
Mr. Flashman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Thank you. Next resolution is twenty twenty four dash zero four eight. Next resolution is twenty twenty-four dash zero four eight renewing the engagement letter for FMLA third-party administrator, which is Charles Snyder. And being resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board approves Charles Snyder Benefit Solution as its third-party administrator for the Family Medical Leave Act. And the leave administration for the following proposal, and they do it by episode of FMLAs, it's not a flat yearly fee or monthly fee, well, I shouldn't say monthly, but yearly fee, after I just corrected myself here. There's an estimated monthly fee of a hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents based on our current staffing, which will fluctuate with at least a monthly mailing charge of a hundred and twenty-five dollars. This price is guaranteed through, for three years effective July first twenty twenty-four. And the fee also includes onboarding of staff and assigned case manager, an employer portal for access, employee communication and coordination throughout the FMLA process, management of all the FMLA documents, the FMLA workflow, and the return to work time, real-time updates with the employer and the employee in various means of customer service. And the administrator or designated shall be the contact person. Basically, what this is, is it's a God send to me, and Robin. This third-party administrator takes care of all the FMLA issues we have.
Paperwork and etc.
Everything, and we get a report monthly that summarizes what employees are on leave, how much time they have available, and it is, it's just, it saves us a ton of hours, ton of hours. So, any questions?
I have a quick one.
Yes, sir.
I sat in on a meeting one day, didn't I, with them?
It, it was either that or the Bureau, Mike, yeah, and all, to me.
And I see, no, and I'm, I understand none of it, so I was just trying to learn. But, yeah, I can see how, well, you and Robin were in on that meeting with those two people, and I've realized I was way out of my element, so, but I was just curious if that was what I'd said in.
Yes, yes.
So, I'm good, John.
So hearing such, before us, we have Resolution twenty twenty-four forty-eight. If there's no further questions on this matter, I move for passage. Is there any further question?
No.
And Steve, everything has been met as far as according to the fiscal department as well as yourself?
It has, we'll see with the exhibit, yeah, Rob and I have talked about this. We've used this company for years, so it's budgeted, so it's nothing out of your hair.
Okay, hearing that, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Hearing a second, when you're ready, sir, I'd ask for a roll call.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
This is the one you sent in.
Okay.
This is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero four nine. It's re-enrollment in the twenty twenty-five group retrospective rating for VWC in the Ohio Township Association Retro Group. And being resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, the Board has agreed to continue their enrollment in the twenty twenty-five Ohio Township Association Group Retrospective Rating Program effective July one twenty twenty-four for the enrollment period one one twenty-five through twelve thirty-one twenty-five. Whereas the participation in the program while not guaranteed is subject to group performance in they say Franklin Township's township on boards of fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars after the service fee. The fiscal officer is authorized to pay the service fee of thirteen thousand five hundred and five dollars from the appropriations in the general fund. And again, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the Board members may have.
So in regards to Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh four nine, if there's no further questions, I would ask for a second.
Second.
Hearing a second, a roll call when you're ready, sir.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
The next thing I have is a approval of a liquor permit for sixteen sixteen Brown and Hart LLC and Patio. It's located at sixteen sixteen Brown Road. Is this?
It's bull shots, yeah.
Okay.
It's a new one.
Apparently, all, in this case, it looks like the owner, Mr. John Henry, has acquired two new owners, which is just updating his liquor, liquor permit.
So, if I may, does their liquor permit run out, or do they just bring in someone else with another liquor permit?
I think they just have two, two, what do I say, partners?
Okay.
So I think that what this is doing is just updating the permit.
I did a records check on the two partners, because that's what we do when they come in, and they were clear.
At one point in time, we had a lot of issues with parking up close. You can remember those years of neighbors beside the cell with the different things, so it's been fairly quiet.
Yeah, they got, they extended their parking lot like east, and then I think they even blacked out a lot of it. And they're saying their parking is bad.
I don't know how you get so many people in such a small little building. Chief, do you know the occupancy on that building?
I do not.
And we check that from time to time during business hours?
I would have to check with Todd, but he does inspect it, yes.
Because, I mean, I'm wondering what the ten o'clock PM statuses versus a twelve o'clock PM?
I'd be happy to answer that for you.
Yeah.
In the future.
Yeah, because, I mean, I'm just curious, with the amount of vehicles that are there for such a small building, while they're at their peak of time, usually we're in bed. So, that's why I was wondering if occasionally if they do an inspection to see if they are adhering to the amount of occupancies that's allowed.
I know Todd does, but I don't know if he's done it recently.
Okay. So, we have resolution on the table, is there? We're getting ready to vote on it. Is there any other questions?
No.
Hearing none, I'd ask for a second, once you're ready.
I'll second it.
Hold on, I thought I did that, I meant, um.
I asked for a second.
Yeah.
You roll call when you're ready. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next thing I have is, we've been working with Rev Group, and Nicole's been working closely with them, trying to break down, we have computers that are becoming, I hate to say obsolete, there's approximately ten, and we've confirmed that with Rev Group. We have two critical desktops that we need replaced right away, and one is for Lieutenant Ratliff. He needs an increase, a new computer plus additional storage for your redaction software. And then Robin, with UAN having constant updates, she is running on the edge of, I don't want to say. If we could have an issue where she runs out of memory, and then UAN is no longer accessible. But I wanted to just bring that up to the trustees, that eventually we're going to need ten, seven desktops and three laptops, but the two critical ones are the other lieutenants and Robbins. The quote that, that we have for all, all ten is right around ten thousand dollars.
So I have a question on it.
Yes, sir.
Like Lieutenant, on yours, the only thing that you're running out is space. Are we able, because I know I've done it to my own, I just added more memory, more RAMs in that, and that's something that is as simple as click, click, and you're done, put the cover on. Is that something that would be obtainable as far as, think of that computer, and then that computer's good for another however long until the memory on that runs out?
On mine, I don't know if you remember, about three months ago, mine completely crashed. The entire thing. That, we had Revolution Group, I think, they actually came out and had to do some kind of patches, and they said, dude, this computer is done. It's like a three hundred dollar computer. And then I found out that I had to have sixty-four, what was it?
Sixty, sixty-four major RAM versus a thirty-two.
For the redaction software that's coming, so it's two-part with mine. I don't know about anybody else's, but that's no one's.
So, another question that I have, you have a desktop. Would it be a hope of you to have even a lap, does it matter?
I don't care, I do.
And here's the reason why. Even like with Robin and some of these other computers, in the past, we have bought computers through Revelation Group, and the problem is, like for instance with yours, I said, let's buy I seven and spend two hundred dollars more than buy what they have because they had I fives. Well, now, the I fives, obviously, you need to change them. Like your personal computer is an I seven that you're using. Isn't it better for us to just purchase our, our stuff through Micro Center? They seem to work with us, and we get the latest, up the highest makes of RAM and storage space, and then allow Revelation Group to go ahead and do the software that they need. Because what they were doing essentially, in my opinion, was, which I don't blame them, they're offloading all their inventory that's like I fives or I fours, and they're only going to be good for a few years, and then again, we need to do it again. So if we get off that merry-go-round and we just search and do our own purchase of computers versus taking what they're saying that we need.
That, I'm glad you brought that up, because that's exactly what Nicole did. This, this, it went up being less than ten thousand dollars, but she did that, she researched through Micro Center and a couple other vendors for computers. And yes, she can, she can find, she has found the same computer, or even better.
For the same price.
Less than what Rev Group.
And I get, they service what they sell, da-da-da-da-da, but we already pay them anyways to service our stuff, so that doesn't, that's a moot point as far as my concern. But I know that, once before sitting in this seat, I was like, hey, let's not do that because it's not going to equal out, and no one wants to have to switch all their stuff every couple of years over to a new computer, where like yours, you've got plenty of room on yours, it runs quick, it's fast, you'll probably still get another three years out of yours with no problem. So I don't know currently what's above the I seven, I don't know if the I nines are going to go that high.
My key from Red.
So the other question, yeah, what is the latest?
I nine.
I nine? Or processor? I do, I do, they were talking about the I nines, I just didn't know if they can, they're currently out.
Tell them we need I nine.
So Lieutenant, my question to you would be, when we get ready to do this, and the same with Robin, but Robin has a lot of stuff plugged in hers. Does it easier for the employee if they have a laptop versus a desktop? So, I don't think there's much difference in price, I think it's usability.
Who prefers?
Right, I mean, I don't have a problem if the employee has a preference, which is better for them, a laptop versus a desktop.
I want whatever they're, form their job the best.
Right. Okay, because it's basically going to be a tower, or sit right here, and she can take it with her to work, or you can take yours and work, it's portable, so that makes it seamless.
She's at home today with guests, so.
So there you go, she may have liked to have hers.
I'm just saying.
Okay, so we're not doing anything at this time, or are we, do you want a motion, or do we need?
No, I just wanted to, to have this discussion with the trustees, so you have this. Now, we're looking potentially at ten computers, but we have two after improve ones. And it's one of those things, do you want to just buy the two, do you want to buy all of them? However you want to do this.
I know for me, I've bought from Micro Center a lot of things for myself and my company, and if we walk in there with saying we need X, Y, and Z, a majority of the time, they really have worked with Franklin Township.
Oh, yeah.
So my thought is, could we just go, you know, when we get ready to do it, or if we're ready to do it, and if we're, we need to do it now, we would just do them all at one time? Because you're going to get more for your bang for your buck.
Well, and again, I think if we, if we do buy these, all of them, I think it's going to be something that we'll have to look at the budget, but we may have to go to the ARPA funds and use some of the, those dollars from that.
So if we have a plan for our next meeting, where, where we would line item this, then I think that we could move on that at the next meeting.
Good.
Okay. And then that way, Mr. Leeser will be here as well. My recommendation, this is just me, I know we have Dell and we have HP and ACERS and different ones, but from my experience and what I do, and the amount of, that I'm on my computer for what we do, we find that HP just by far plug and play, no issues, you don't have to find it or get a patch or hardware download, it just seems to be plug and play. My preference was to see us have HP.
I agree.
But that's my opinion to HP or Dell or anyone listening, it's just an opinion.
No, I have a Dell.
I want a couple more things, I promise.
Yeah. Sometimes it may be a small bit more, and I think yours is an HP that would.
Yes.
We got it, and, I mean, no matter what you do, if you're needing a printer, you plug it in, it finds the printer, boom, print, you don't have to sit there and try to, why aren't they not talking to each other? Which sometimes can be, oh, you're ready to throw it out the window. Back to the agenda. So sir, do you have anything else for us?
Just a couple more things. As you know, we've had a fire at three fifty-five Georgesville, which I'll give you some facts, which I believe is Ponderosa, the Ponderosa State House. A fire at three eighty-five Georgesville, which I think is Shakers, and then a fire at eighty-five Phillipine. Captain Braker has been working diligently with Bill Tool, who is the Township's Building Inspector, and they've been keeping us in the loop here. We received a check from State Farm Insurance for ninety-six thousand dollars, the township has. That check is to cover the eventual demolition of the Ponderosa. We received quotes from Low Indict, one of the larger demo companies in central Ohio. To demolition the Ponderosa building would be, I believe, thirty-five thousand dollars. My conversations with the insurance company is, that's fine, you use the ninety-six thousand dollars to cover the expense of demoing Ponderosa, but of course, you need to send the rest of the proceeds back to the insurance company. Well, last week, the owner of Ponderosa, because again, Captain Braker's been working with his gentleman, telling them, the township is not going to stand around and have these buildings in this condition. The owner of Ponderosa came in to get a permit. We're waiting for the permit to be approved by our Building Inspector, Bill Tool, William Tool. Once that's approved, then the owner can go ahead and start demolishing the building. Where we're in a predicament right now, and again, I'm working with Captain Braker on this, we need to establish a deadline, we need to make sure that the owner of the building is in town cleaning this up. If not, I wanna be able to use your high revised code that we've used in the past to clean up the nuisance property. So we're, we're in limbo right now.
I did notice that in the email and it really saddened me because we were making strides. And now it's taken back out of our hands and who knows how long he's gonna take to clean that up. And it's been an eyesore in the township. So my question is, if we put it, and I saw the emails back and forth from Bill Tool himself. Are we able to put a date, let's just hypothetically say on April thirtieth? If it's not done the very next day, we take over and we put a crew in there to start sweeping up, cleaning up, finishing it up, and their, their hands are off.
I, I do know based on the permit that, I'm not one hundred percent sure, I shouldn't say that, I'm not a hundred percent sure. There is an expiration date on that permit when that work has to be done, and it may be thirty days. If that's the case, what, what we're preparing to, I think we as a township, we're ready to declare the nuisance property. And Captain Breaker has expressed this to the owner, that we are prepared to call that a nuisance property and start our process to have it removed. The nice thing in this case is township has ninety-six thousand dollars that we don't have to use taxpayer funds.
So.
We have.
So can we go ahead and move forward to get it, even though he's getting his permit? Can we go ahead and move forward and get that as a nuisance property? Because we can always pull that off the table. But it's gonna take us an extra thirty six, we're gonna be in July and nothing done with that.
No, we're not gonna do, this is my opinion, no, we're not gonna do that. There's too much now, as you gentlemen know, going on at West Broad Street now. If it were up to me, I can't see that building standing there till July as Shakers.
To me, I would've spent the money that was the insurance and it would've been down this week.
Well, I, I'm gonna talk with Julie, I like that thinking of being proactive, that let's get our ducks in a row.
There's no reason for us to stop because he's asking for a permit. It's still a nuisance property until it's cleaned up. So if we continue to move forward on the nuisance property, because just because he's putting in for a permit, doesn't mean that we stop on a nuisance property. Once we get the nuisance property obtained, then we can execute it as we want or delete it.
I have no qualms of that. Like I said, I'll talk with our counsel just to make sure.
You're good with that, sir?
I am.
Just to make sure, but I like that. If that timeline is thirty days and as you're saying, then we step in immediately.
Immediately, cause we have it in our hand going, this is our ace. If that's not on the thirtieth, then we play this and we step in, cause we've already got the money from the insurance company.
Yes, I do, I, I, I do like that. So, and then again, with Shakers, again, Captain Breaker working with Mr. Tool. Has been in communication with the owner of Shakers and they understand this is the same position. Shakers supposedly, supposedly has a buyer for that. They secured the building right now, but supposedly they have a buyer. But this could very well be the same thing where I come back to you gentlemen thirty days from now and say, I Ponderosa's taken care of, now we have an issue with Shakers.
So my thought is, I know I'm talking a lot. I could care less what's going on with the property. That's blinders to me. My thing is, establish that it's a nuisance property and it obtains over to the new ownership if there is.
Yes.
For us to stop just because there may be a new ownership, to me, I could care less. So for me, once we declare that it is a nuisance property, the new owner doesn't say, well, I just bought it, give me, no. You bought it as is, it's already a nuisance, it needs to be taken care of immediately.
Right.
Or we will.
Right. Now, the issue with this is, it was very upfront, my job. The township may be responsible to fund that demolition, because in the case of Shakers, we don't have the luxury of having a check from the insurance company.
Correct.
Again, to demo that building is approximately thirty-five thousand dollars.
Now, would we obtain that back through?
Well, as it goes to attaching a lien, a duplicate on their property.
But we would obtain that or we would obtain the property.
Exactly. Once it's sold, then the new owner would be responsible for that. My understanding is that way.
We might have some say also if there's a liquor license involved in order for that property to be sold, if it was going to be sold with the liquor license.
That's an interesting point.
Wouldn't we have some say on if that sale went through? I, I know you could sell a liquor license and it doesn't attach to that property, but if that was the person interested in buying that piece of property with the liquor license. Then we would have some say there.
That's, that's an interesting point, Mike, and I never even considered the liquor license. I'm just zeroing in on the building, but that's a great suggestion.
But if we put out the money, like John just said, and they want to sell the property after we put out the money, they would have to make us hold.
Right, and we can force to sell the property too. We don't have to wait for them.
About that, but I'm just saying, if there was a sale of the property, wouldn't, doesn't the back taxes have to be brought up?
Yes. So we wouldn't have to look at a Franklin Township becoming blighted with these fires. That are sitting there, that are killing what we're trying to build. Here you got Westwood Mall that is well on the way, that's family down and things are starting to happen and you got two burnout buildings next to each other. And then you're waiting on somebody to purchase the other one, which we don't know the history of who buys it. Then we're gonna have to fight with them to get it down and they are gonna go, well, we're looking at maybe repairing it. No, we need to, we need to just move forward as we're going, not stop because it's being sold or potential sold. If we need to spend the thirty-five thousand, we need to vote on that. In my opinion, we would spend it and we would attach it to the tax duplicate and we would get the taxpayer dollars back. Then we have something that's leveled. If someone's gonna come in there, we're gonna build something that's new in the township. And it's gonna change the dynamics of the property tax, which is gonna benefit the township because there's gonna be a different tax code now. So Todd, what we were talking about?
I heard.
Okay.
Am I, am I right on that, Todd? We'll give the, the guy Ponderosa thirty days once his permit's approved and then, is that the timeline on that?
Once we get the permit back from Mr. Tool, Tool Associates, the chief building official, once we get it back, Mr. Tool is going to write in the paperwork and the orders that he has already started. He's gonna have five days from when we contact Mr. Jalock. That he, he owns three fifty-five Georgesville Road. He's a property owner, he'll have five days to come pick it up and start work. From that timeframe, if he doesn't pick it up within the five days, we are allowed to move forward and do what we need to, to either demolish the property. Whatever we decide to do at that, well, whatever you decide to do at that point. He has five days from when we notify him that the permit's ready for pickup, he has five days to pick it up. If he doesn't do anything at that point, we can move forward with the demolition of the building. If he picks it up within that five days, he has twenty days. Twenty days to have that building down and complete and inspected by Tool and Associates to make sure everything is how it should be according to the demolition orders. So roughly, once we get it back from Tool and Associates, he'll have at most twenty-five days to have the building down.
So the other property that we do not have money for, which is which building?
Three eighty-five Georgesville Road, Shakers Pub House.
Okay, so the Shakers. So they're in talks with wanting to sell that.
I talked to Mrs. Volk this morning. She had let me know that Mr. Mazur had contacted her as well, but she hadn't gotten back to him yet. She has a potential buyer right now. They do have the funds to demolish the building, but they're working that out in the sale of the building. And this is what she's told me on the phone. They are working that out in the sale of the building to whether they tear it down or the new owners will tear it down. That hasn't been decided yet, but I told her that things need to move along. So, but we don't necessarily have to wait for what they're doing, like I heard you gentlemen talking about earlier. We don't have to wait, Mr. Tool.
I'd rather just move forward.
Mr. Tool and I were out there and we visited the property before it was boarded up, so they, they have done a good thing by boarding up the property, make sure it's as secure as possible. Mr. Tool and I went through the building itself and there's, there's a lot wrong with it. So hopefully they, they, you know, they either sell it quickly and get it demolished quickly. Or we can move forward and, and do things with the building department and nuisance properties in the county.
So what was the date of that fire, roughly?
Jeez, I don't remember. I'm sorry, but I, was it January?
So we're looking at four months, and this is the point I'm getting at.
Well, it's, it's been, it's probably been about two months since the actual fire, two and a half. And unfortunately, we have a fire like that, you have to give the property owner and their insurer time to come in, do an assessment, do their own investigation and things like that. So we can't start the ball rolling at, at the end of our investigation for the fire. We have to give the property owner and their insurance company an equal opportunity to come in and investigate the fire, look into what happened, do assessments on the building. And, and move that way. It can't be, you know, as soon as I say, yep, we're all done here, investigation's over, we don't need to build anymore, we can't start that clock running. It'd be unfair to the property owner. I mean, cause that's a lot to try to get fixed and, and figure out in a short amount of time. I was initially under the impression from Caitlin and Spencer, who were the, the tenants, they, they actually operated Shakers Pub House. They were the, the business owners that they were intending to have it rebuilt and have it repaired. But they were having issues with the, the property owner. They necessarily weren't seeing eye to eye and Caitlin and Spencer couldn't make any of those decisions, cause it was the building itself that needed to be repaired, which falls on the property owner. And I guess that did, that, that didn't work out to the way the, the business owners wanted it to go. Property owners decided, you know, to try to sell, I guess.
So one of the things that I would like to see is a lot of times we get into a catch twenty-two. These two entities or two people are trying to work out how they're gonna divvy up the cost negotiation of tearing it down. So what I don't wanna see them is eat up time and take it into the next month. And then that person that purchases it takes two more months to start doing anything with it. Because an emergency on our part isn't necessarily emergency on their part. I don't wanna see that thing sitting there in July like it is now, just because it's changed hands. And let's face it, it could change hands again after the people that, that buy it. You know, someone may be buying it to just flip, who knows? But the key point is, we cannot allow that to be a catch twenty-two of why it's not going down. So I don't know if you have a way or Bill has a way, that an escrow is set up for the monies that is going, that, how are they to settle it? That money goes into escrow until that building is tore down. No different than if anyone purchases a home and you have an agreement that a new roof is going on, add to closing. That money, that portion of the money goes into a escrow account until the work is done.
I, I don't know about that. I just know that it, it's, it's one of those things that.
Because if we don't do that, if we don't, we give them as much, you know, it costs them nothing for us to yell at them.
Right, but the thing is, for us to move forward with, with doing anything with that building, it's going to come out of the township coffers to pay for that to be done. And I know I, I heard Mr. Blevins talk about putting a, a tax lien on it and we get it back once the building sold, is sold. That may be what we need to do or what the township needs to do. But it's one of those things that unless we're prepared to, and Mr. Tool warned me about this when we issued the orders for demolition for three fifty-five Georgesville, the old Ponderosa. He goes, once this, once we issue this, he goes, you must proceed with it. Cause if you don't see it all the way through and have it torn down, you'll never be able to do it to anybody else. They'll fight you tooth and nail and it'll cost you a fortune in the courts. But it'll cost us money through the court system anyway, cause we'll have to go through, through the, the county, through the environmental court and say, hey, look, this is a nuisance property. We have our chief building official says it needs to be demolished, it needs to come down, and we have to proceed through that. Then you have to be prepared to pay to actually have the building demolished. Now with the, the building, Ponderosa at three fifty-five Georgesville, we do have the money from State Farm Insurance that they gave us the check to hold for that building. So that way, Mr. Jalock can, once he gets it torn down, he will receive his check from State Farm. But we can use the money from them to tear it down, but we have to make sure that we do it correctly and he has his permit in process, so we have to give time for that to play out. I, I, I wish things would happen faster, but we have to make sure that, that as, as a government entity, we follow the constitution just as well as everybody else. And we cross our Ts and dot our Is.
So that way, we're. If you would check with Julie to see if we can mandate that money be put in, into escrow and based on sole of that property, if that's possible. This would be the one that they are looking to sell, not the one with.
Three eighty-five Georgesville, Shakers Pub House.
Shakers. Cause if they're, if they are looking and negotiating to sell, unless we, I mean, we can easily tell them in negotiation. Either you agree to what Julie has, that you're gonna put it in escrow, or we're gonna continue with, you know, continue with nuisance.
Once you trustees declare the nuisance property, we contact the owner, our process starts. I, we don't worry about.
Do we already have that now?
We don't worry about what's going on behind the scenes. If, if you trustees declare a nuisance property, we serve the owner, and then your process starts. Which is what Todd is saying.
What's that address?
Three eighty-five Georgesville Road.
Which is exactly what you're saying, Todd. If Bill says.
If, if Mr. Tool says that the building's too far gone and needs to be torn down and issues an order for demolition, that is an unsafe structure. That, that day we receive that from him, that starts the clock that it's a nuisance property now and they need to do something about it. They're, they're notified usually by certified mail, that's what we did with the property owner, three fifty-five Georgesville. We notify him by certified mail that you must take care of this, here's your order from our chief building official, it's an unsafe structure, you need to tear it down. That starts the clock.
Okay, so can we make a, a resolution declaring this today? Is this something that we can do for three eighty-five?
Well, this is why I wanted to have this discussion. The township will have to, out of their budget, will have to come up with thirty-five thousand dollars to demo.
So we have to put up or shut up. So we're gonna put up, so, so discussion. Mr. Blevins. I, and, and what I'm writing down is I'm prepared to wanna make a, a resolution. That is going to cost the township thirty-five thousand dollars if they don't, if they don't heave to our order. And then we would attach it to their tax duplicate. So then they will be notified that the board of trustees have put this building as a, declared as a nuisance and it needs to come down. So my question to you is, would you feel comfortable today to vote on a said resolution? That declaring Shakers, the old Shakers at thirty, thirty-eight, thirty-eight or three eighty-five Georgesville Road?
Three eighty-five?
So, we're sitting here today and it's Thursday, we already man, said we were getting together next week for sure.
A special meeting? We can hold it till?
And James could be there then, Steve could contact, I thought he wanted to contact Julie to make sure that this is all. I would like to wait, but I'd like to get it done next week. I'd like to go on to the next agenda. I don't want to go any longer, but I just feel, let's just take a breath and do it next week.
We can do that then.
And James can be here and he can make part of the decision because it's thirty-five thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money.
Okay, that's why I'm asking if you feel comfortable or if we should proceed, that's why there's three of us.
No, I'm not trying to go against what you're saying. You're asking for my opinion.
Absolutely.
My mind's racing and that's what I came up with. Real quick, Todd, cause you brought me up to date. Can you bring the audience and John, maybe you have brought John up to date, on the medical building on Georgesville?
Eighty-five Phillipine?
Yeah.
Mr. Tool and I also went through that building. He did an examination with me. It was unsecure at the time. There was actually, I believe, a homeless person or someone that came out of the building when we pulled up. I announced myself as being with the fire department, but when I saw him walk out of the building when we pulled in, I contacted Chief Smith and asked him if he could send an officer my way. And he diverted me to Lieutenant Ratliff, who Lieutenant Ratliff and Officer Myers proceeded to meet us up there. But the gentleman was long gone by then. It was unsecure, the doors were open. Mr. Tool assessed the, the building itself. It was a mess inside, to put it to, you know, mildly. There's a lot of issues with that building. Mr. Tool and I had a good conversation about it and again, he, he's willing to work with you guys. Depending on, on what he, information he shares with you. There is structural damage to that facility, to that building. I don't know whether the letter we sent a few weeks prior to that finally got to the property owner, but it was secured. And I mean, secured very well. They took a lot of. Uh, but it was secured and I mean secured very well. Um, they took a lot of plywood and they did some very good things to make sure that no one was getting into that building, which is a key thing for us to keep vagrants out, homeless people out. Um, and I think I share with you, Mr. Blevins, there was a whole bunch of drug paraphernalia inside, a whole bunch of human waste. Um, it, it was a messed up, messed up property. And then outside has also been cleaned up at that property, which was a nightmare as well. Um, so they've done their part to help move forward. Um, the same as three eighty-five Georgetown. I'm hoping eighty-five Phillipi, I hope the property owners are actually taking what we're saying to them seriously, since we are sending certified letters, things like that be, you know, well, this is what we're doing. We're moving forward. So you can either get in front of it or you can wait till we do something and then either force you to do something or we'll do it at your expense. Um, I don't know about most business owners, but I think I'd rather take every problem like that myself. Instead of having someone else do it and charge me whatever they spent. Um, cause I mean, it's, you might be able to find somebody cheaper than thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars to that building now, either one of them, so.
And if we do this with Shakers, it puts a little bit of bite in our bark.
Yes.
If you understand.
Well, we're already doing, we're already doing it with three fifty-five Georgetown.
They're going to say they need business. They're tired of hearing, we're going to get to it, we're going to get to it and working on it. If we take action and we bring something or both of them down, then I think it means a little bit more when we say something and we just keep saying it. So that's my opinion.
With the property at three fifty-five Georgetown, the old Ponderosa, um, we've had other issues with that since it was, it was Ponderosa, it was closed down. Uh, La Plaza Tapatia operated out of there for a while, then they moved to a new location, then they built their current location. Um, it sat vacant for a while. Um, uh, Chief can remember when we had issues with people illegally using that as assembly, as a party hall. The police department helped us out with that in, in making sure that they were compliant. Um, and I believe the gentleman owns it now. I, I think he'll actually take it down. Um, because of all the steps that have been taken. So I think we're, we're setting the bar with him. It took us a little while to get to where we are because there are a couple stumbling blocks we ran into. Um, but I, I, I think he'll take that down and I think Mrs. Volk with, uh, with, with Shakers, she's the trustee of the, the, the estate. Um, I think that's where some of the issues, why it's taken a little bit longer with that is because she is the third trustee. Um, they have changed trustees several times. Um, so it, it unfortunately, every time now you, you don't necessarily start over square one, but you have to bring whoever's in charge of things up to speed. So hopefully they realize by us reaching out and contacting them and me telling them that the chief building official has looked at your property and needs to be demolished. You need to do something about it. You need to at least secure it for the, the meantime while you're trying to sell it and, and moving forward with that, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate all your updates and yours. I've had several.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's one of those things that we're here to be clairvoyant and, and, and transparent, make sure everybody is on the same page. So hopefully, uh, hopefully within the, this month, uh, the old Ponderosa will be down. Um, I mean, I'm, I'm expecting that permit back from Mr. Tool and, and the next week, hopefully. Um, so then that, like I said, we're, we're looking at, at twenty-five days from once we get it back from him.
So what about this Shell Station? I don't know if you mentioned that. Is that, what number is that?
Uh, forty, forty-one oh six maybe? Forty-one sixty-two?
Yeah, forty-one sixty.
Forty-one sixty-two West Broad Street. It's on the northeast corner of, uh, Broad, Georgetown and Phillipi. Um, it's been vacant forever. Um, while Mr. Tool was with me that day and we were looking at those properties, we happened to pull in there and the police department joined us. Again, there were some issues about people living around it, uh, using part of the property as a, as literally a landfill. Um, uh, again, we can contact the property owner and say, hey, you need to clean this up. Um, public health, uh, I, I did not notify them, um, simply because I know it's been on their radar before. Um, and we were going to reach out to the property owner there to see if they would come clean it up again on the exterior. They usually do a pretty good job of keeping that boarded up. Um, somebody obviously has, has, has made some crude structures there. One is an outside latrine. Um, so there's, there's a, uh, uh, issues with again, human waste on the outside of the building. Um, health department needs to come in and, and help us with that. We can issue them, you know, a notice being like, hey, look, someone's using your facilities as, as a trash dump. And if you notice, I know I spoke with Mr. or Officer Myers when we were there, that there was a gentleman that has, um, uh, some mental health issues that's homeless. He views that partially as his property. So he kicked someone out and moved all their stuff towards the sidewalk, um, only to be arrested for an outstanding warrant. Um, so he's not there anymore, uh, but I'm sure other people are using the property, but there's still trash all over the place. Um, and we can do with that the same thing we are doing with the other properties on Georgetown and Phillipi. Uh, we can look to make it a nuisance property because there, there are repeated problems there. I'm sure Lieutenant Ratliff has a longer sheet than I ever do about visits their police officers make there for people trespassing. But that, that makes it a nuisance property as well and it makes it unsafe. Cause we've had a couple fires there in the past, nothing in the, in the recent past. Um, but I think roughly a year, year and a half ago, we had a fire. They had the doors open to the old car wash. Uh, they had set a, I'm assuming it was a warming fire, cause it looked more like a campfire than anything else. But we can also use the nuisance property and we can use Mr. Tool to say, hey, look, you, you at least need to clean up the outside of this. Um, we couldn't go inside structurally, cause like I said, they do a pretty good job of keeping their building secure. Uh, one door was open, um, to a small room. Um, no one was in there at the time, but I'd not say that they can't get into the rest of the building, so. So we're just kinda, it's, it's up to you gentlemen, what you would like to do. Um, but all these things that we pursue, if we have Mr. Tool issue orders, we have to follow through with and we have to take it to the end where it is, it is a vacant piece of property, ready to be developed again by someone else or the current property owner. Um, but, uh, we have to follow through, cause if we don't, uh, we won't be able to use that avenue anymore. Cause everybody's like, well, you didn't make them do it, so why you go make us?
They've, they've actually created, uh, they've stacked up blocks right up against the building with an opening for a homeless toilet. There's like feces filled up in there and.
The old gas station that we're talking about.
Yeah, it's about this tall.
Eighty-five Phillipi has a court here in this building with the environmental court, so we'll be interested to see how that goes.
Okay.
And what we're finding out, Todd's very familiar with, the environmental court would rather have a township, cause we have more muscle to pursue these nuisance properties than the environmental court. So much like some of the projects we've done in the past, the environmental court endorses a township, use the Ohio Revised Code. It, it's much more efficient than going through the environmental court because states just keep getting delayed and delayed and delayed. And we have a thirty day deadline. It's just as Todd said, are we able to afford the cost of the demolition?
And then in the end, we get it, but one of the things, Mr. Blevins said that if we start this, word gets around and they know that we, we don't play, that this is an evident, this is what's gonna happen and it's gonna happen quickly and you can't, you can't ask for, you can't get a thirty day extension as if you're an environmental court or ninety days and then come back and ask for another thirty days. So we can actually get these things moving. And this is the first time that we've really been able to use this statute, that we've taken advantage of it and we've learned how to do it. One, by having an administrator, someone that can work on it. Two, as yourself, that is working on this on a regular day basis.
Well, there's just too much money being invested in that area right now. They can't, they can't do this. I mean, between the mall and, and West Broad and Phillipi and Lincoln's and, you know, they're talking millions and millions of dollars.
Yeah, and it's not gonna attract the right people. Same area, different problem. What about the guy standing in the middle of, uh, even on Georgetown? Wheelchairs in the, in the medium and then off the concrete in the medium.
Well, I could confidently tell you that I got two guys that can just hammer.
That's all, which we need to, and Wilson Road, Wilson and, uh, Broad.
Exactly. We got two officers that just love getting taken care of that forest and they've been doing it.
Because the amount of money that is starting to come into our corridor there is gonna be a tax relief to a lot of the residents. And the last thing we need is the, the people on Broad Street and on Phillipi, and then it turns into Georgetown. And they're just, they're right. I, I don't know how they don't get hit.
Well, I think you probably might also have noticed that there hasn't been complaints from West Mall about homeless people up on their property.
Right.
We've been hammering them guys.
And I think the, the word will get back to their enters, the homeless enters. This is not hard headed people, man. Obviously, and then this is to everybody, you think, okay, they make a dollar or two. I see them argue over shift change, who's gonna be standing, like when I leave here, I gotta go, um, Sullivan, turn right onto, uh, Wilson. Right there. Certain times of day is certain people, cause that's when they clock in and then they clock out. Billy Ray goes over and Billy Ray's there. They wouldn't be there if it wasn't profitable.
One hundred percent.
They would not do it if it was a waste of their time.
The courts won't keep them in, in, down the jail though. I can tell you that. We, we've actually taken them to jail uh, at ten o'clock in the morning, say, and by two o'clock, that guy's standing on that corner again and we are running them right back down again.
Yeah, but I mean, here's the thing, again, they live close to where they work. I call it work. Call it what you want, vague. If we apply the pressure according to the law to them, eventually they're gonna move to another township or another area that isn't going to, they're, they're gonna look the other way. The reason that they're here is because we've almost taken the approach, we pick them up at ten, they're back at two. Well, at two o'clock, pick them up again, waste their time, not our time. And if they're not making enough money that they seek, they're gonna move somewhere else where it's out of our reach.
Well, we kinda tell them, go to the city, they don't enforce it. Other side of Wilson Road.
But there's gotta be a way that we can keep pressure on them, so that they don't just stay in our area. Because you've got other places, go up to Dublin. Be careful how I say this. I just wanted to say like when you go to the zoo, you see certain signs. In Dublin, I got off the exit one thirty-three and I figured what exit that is. Immediately they had a sign that was one of those TP type signs and says, do not feed, do not, do not give or whatever. There's better ways to give than to do this. And they tend to really hit that area hard and you do not see, um, vagrants, um, out there with their signs.
What's in those signs up at our intersection signs then?
I know.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, as we are getting more officers and as we do this throughout the township, we need to take a more positive push to this. Because if we take a backseat going, they just let them go. Well, there's gotta be, we gotta think outside the box. Alls we have to do is make it uncomfortable for them and they go somewhere else.
But we want the new businesses to feel like they'll be safe.
Right, absolutely. Absolutely. And that's one of the biggest things like with Dublin in the area that I'm talking about. And I don't know that exit, it's the first one is you're going to the, uh, west on thirty-three, just past the one sixty, or whatever, one sixty-one and it's the next one or whatever one right there. And then the hospitals there, the new hospital and et cetera, et cetera. That is exactly what you said. They don't want people, you know, rolling their windows up or trying, you know, at that intersection. The only thing you ever see there once a year is the nuisance and, um, they're all, so if we're able to do more and push, you said you already had two officers that like to do that. We oughta try to keep some stats on that to see, are we making a difference? Because if you go up Wilson Road from Sullivan, they have been camping along the fence and the city's been coming in and cleaning them out and the amount of trash that they have along that fence road is phenomenal. I mean, that's out of the township, but it's obviously a problem.
Moved up north there to Wilson and Broad. We've actually evicted those out, but we have no means of getting the trash that's left there out there.
Okay, so I know I hammered on that long enough, but I think you get to justify that. Lastly, um, Mr. Mazer, there's something else I wanted to bring up and, and I don't know if this would go under with you, Jim, but Concrete Alley and Money Back, the, the first house on that corner is a rental and they do a pretty good job about, um, keeping their property clean. But right next door, it's becoming a haven of, I, I, you're talking about, what is it? Yeah, yeah. And are we able to take a look at that and see who owns it? And part, part of the structure's still standing. It just looks really bad. I don't know the address. They call that the Concrete Alley. And if you turn in on Brookside at the alley, turn right and it's, it's there on your right. You can't miss it. Yes. But it's just becoming a catch-all for more and more stuff. Now, the owner of the parcel that's down with the woods is they cut all that out because of all the homeless that was staying in there. And that itself is, uh, uh, you know, gonna be hard, cause they, less stumps like that. But that did create, take away the, the little camps that were staying in there.
It's a lot better shape now, a little wood.
Yes, that's for sure, because it's bad. So I'll move on. Did you have anything more? Um, next up, Mr. Leisure, he's not here, myself. The only thing that I would like to report is, um, Joyce, um, and, um, Joyce and Charlene, Charlene's brother Bill that usually comes has passed away. The funeral's gonna be this Friday. Um, he had a stroke and it was nice to hear that you guys did great care getting, um, early in the morning to facilitate. Now, he's been fighting many different illnesses for years and a lot of times he would come and with them. But I'm sure that's why they're not here today. So just remember them in your thoughts and prayers. Um, I know for me, they've been a neighbor for twenty-eight years and, um, really good people. So, and they've been very active as, um, township in coming to the meetings. So that's all I have. Sir, do you have anything? So at this point, I'm going to open the floor. If someone has a question, let's try to keep it to a minimum on your questions. If you raise your hand, you'd be recognized. Go ahead.
Um, as far as, uh, you were talking about Money Back and that little alley there and that, well, you know, the panhandler that stands there at, uh, begs there all seventy?
The beard?
Yes. Um, he's squatting in the house down on Plainview and he's also selling drugs in the neighborhood.
Right here, if you could stay out.
Okay, we've had several discussions with regard to Mr. Wilczek and I knew in the last four or five months, Lindsay's issue has been that Mr. Wilczek comes in, doesn't let anybody know when he's coming to this building, has access to our private security code and hasn't been training her. And she's been saying that for a long while and that's why she had to change the lock on her door, because he was coming in, getting into things and then she couldn't find things where they were. This whole thing with Jeff is not a new thing. I mean, I've been asking about him for months, so somehow, somewhere along the way, we gotta ring him in.
I think, um, you're correct. I think what, um.
Cause I've got all my notes on it.
Mr. Blevins, what Mr. Blevins had said, so by us having a meeting next week, all parties will be in, it'll be a special meeting.
Right.
And, um, I think this is once and for all, we're gonna get a lot of questions to answer.
I hope so.
Um, you know, I don't know, I, I heard the same thing you had, that, of course, he does have coming in. I didn't know that he had a key, because that's not our department. And is he on a regular schedule? Is he here at six P to noon? I don't know.
But why does he have access to the security code of our buildings? That's one thing that bothers me. Because there isn't anybody here in the hours he's been coming and that's.
Correct.
That's not good. That's bad ethics on his behalf.
Sure. Um, generally, um, his office is the office back here. So I think he gets here at six AM or something. I don't know, but the rest of the offices are locked up. And to my knowledge, he doesn't have access to anything else other than the restroom. So I don't know if him having access to get in the building, um, he wouldn't have access to anything else.
I understand that, but I think it's an ethics issue as to why in the name of heaven he is in our township building without any of our administration or staff being present.
Okay.
Because we don't know what that is doing. I mean, we just don't.
This is a good question. So this is without putting Mr. Mazer on the spot as the administrator, when we have that. When we have that meeting, and this will be a question that will be brought up, Mr. Mazur, um, what is the timeframe that we should set? Should he be in here without being from nine o'clock when most people get here? So that is a good question that will be addressed.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to bring that up again, because this has been going on for at least six months.
Okay. So is there any other questions? Yes, sir.
I just have one more. It's, uh, for your information. I understand you don't wanna use like the thirty-five thousand dollars to, 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 to demo one of these facilities, but also keep in fact, when you do put your tax lien on, you can charge administration fees and you can also charge interest on those. So yes, it would come out of our funds, but yet we could actually make money on that, just letting you know that.
I appreciate that. Any other questions? Here are none. We are adjourned at two fourteen.